Yeah.
Yeah, he's in the back.
Oh, there he is.
He's blending in and.
Incognito. He's back there hanging out with me and Doug.
No, it's a surprising kind of, I'm not quite like, yeah, so. Oh, oh, was it Helen complicated for you? Yeah. At least I know that he told me to do that. And they just didn't go with it.
Yell at me if there's a problem. They'll only yell at me if I'm fired.
They can kill him.
They should be able to.
Oh, yeah.
Those are.
Those are right.
Are you vulgar pervert too?
He's got a chub down his knee this.
If I respond to Zindale and Conza and Ash.
Okay.
No, it's just where I live, where my partner is. Somebody was doing it for me while I was in service. My trust.
Yeah, we made stuff here, remember? The house is our house, it's in our name, but.
Well, that was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And after that, we were, we're getting into fire. Because we've always been calling to lose us.
We all have done wars and losses.
Something else. He's like, well, I can do that, you know, so. When they signed up, nobody else here.
You guys, you guys, just seem a little dirty or, you know, which. What does it say?
Now we lost John Martin.
You mean you all read this?
I got it, I read whatever, yeah, anyone read that?
I can't, you may have read it before.
I know.
We can say it's my turn, isn't it? That's somebody else wants to.
Lisa, ready?
Good evening, we're gonna go ahead and call the Riley County Planning Board and Board of Zoning Appeals to Order. It's a little after seven thirty here, so we'll get started. As we open each meeting, we have open public comments, anything to do with planning the zoning. But as long as it isn't to have to do with what's on the agenda this evening. So if you have, there's anybody, go up to the podium, state your name, whatever comments you want to make. So, okay, as I see there's no takers, we'll move on.
Okay, hold on there.
Oh. Good evening, my name's Robert L. Brandenburg, my wife Marion and I live in a single-family dwelling at fifty-two forty-seven Terror Heights Drive, Manhattan, Kansas. I have a prepared statement I would like to first read aloud and then have my statement entered into the record and I have copy for your secretary. County guidelines which govern the short-term lease of private residence allow the owner to establish a full-time motel within the neighborhoods where other commercial businesses are excluded because of zoning restrictions. One of these establishments has recently located, been located next door to my own residence. The property owner does not live at the residence, nor is there anyone working for the owner living at the residence. The residence is advertised online and is rented out to anyone willing to pay the rental fee. A full-time motel conducts the same type of activity. The only apparent difference being that in Riley County, the length of time a customer rents the property is the only consideration that apparently is given. Regardless of the owner having never lived at the residence for any part of the year. Allowing such blatantly commercial motel activities to be established within areas zoned as single-family dwelling neighborhoods should be ended immediately. To continue to allow such entrepreneurial activities is in total disregard of permanent neighborhood residents' rights and the expectation that the county officials have been, that have been elected to protect said rights from such encroachments has been there heretofore then is heretofore been demonstrated, not, not, not good. Riley County officials are not living up to the Planning and Development Mission Statement of promoting the highest quality of life for present and future residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment?
Thank you.
Besides what's on the agenda for this evening?
Well, in short, totally, fifty-four, Terror Heights Drive. I'm actually neighbors across the street from Bob and across from one of the short-term rentals. I think as the neighborhood up there, we've got two short-term rentals that have been operating either in compliance with the license according to the land use regulations or without. But nevertheless, we still have to put up with not only noise complaint issues, but as well as excess traffic. And not being able to contact certain personnel such as the owners or an agent, somebody that can actually deal with some of the issues. So it's, it's been a concern as far as the neighborhood because of certain events such as Super Bowl weekend, we've had guests that rented out the location, shot off mortar-type fireworks in which pretty much all the neighborhood acknowledged that it was loud enough you could hear them inside the home, as well as we had verbal confrontation, Riley County Police has been called out there before. So it's, it's an issue that not only affects individual neighbors right around the home, but it also affects neighbors that are down the road that actually have to deal with the excess traffic speeding up and down and the noise concern. So I think that's something as a neighbor and as a community members, we do want to come back and get on the early agenda and then go through a more comprehensive review to see if we can make some amendments to the short-term rental guidelines and the licensing. Because currently, if it, if it's unlawful to, to run that commercial business, even though I talked to Bob for a couple hours last week, and he, he's very understanding and I believe most everybody that I've spoken to, especially order county commissioners, they all agree that it's an issue, it's a problem that we're having with certain individuals that have short-term rentals. But if we can get through some of those regulations and kind of tighten things up so that not only is there the regulation that we actually have those people to enforce that and actually go out and continue to enforce some of the regulations. That's what I'd like to see, that we'll be talking more than they able to, if possible.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
All right, thank you guys for your time this evening. Paul Frisbee, also a Terror Heights resident, I'm having similar issues as well with neighbors and renters, right? And, you know, we've had to call law enforcement out on, on occasion to deal with the renters. And, you know, would you hear back from the law enforcement, well, there's not much we can do about it. And the county's aware of it and, and we've had the resources in place to develop regulations and guidelines for these short-term rentals. But now we need to go a step further as, as maybe Troy alluded to, and, and how do we, is there a way that we can get some type of funding to support Amanda and Bob with helping to enforce some of these regulations that are being overlooked or glossed over, however you would say, by the, by the homeowners? The other thing I wanted to say was that yeah, the bottom line is, as a resident, I look as an FTR, a full-time resident versus a short-term rental resident. My property taxes continue to go up, but the quality of life in my neighborhood continues to go down, so we're, we're kind of getting out of balance, so. I don't know if we work together as a team to, to do some amendments or tighten things up, as Troy mentioned. Get some additional funding, I don't know how we go about doing that, do we impose additional taxes? Is that even possible on those units to help support that? The resources we need to enforce some of these vital lessons that are taking place, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? If not at this time, we'll have Rita read the rules for the public comment session during our regular meeting that.
Sure. And the following applies to all meetings of the Riley County Planning Board, Board of Zoning Appeals. Public comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes per each speaker. The time limit does not include questions asked by board members. The chair reserves the right to extend, extend speaker time should the situation warrant doing so. All comments should be directed at the board. All speakers must go to the podium to make comments, stating their full name and address before beginning. Public comment shall be made only during the designated time on the agenda at any public meeting. Public comments are out of order if made outside the designated time on the agenda of a public meeting and without the speaker having first been recognized by the chair. Remarks of individual speakers shall not simply be repetitive of identical comments made by prior speakers. Verbal or visual personal attacks on private citizen staff or board members shall not be allowed. Speakers who violate anyone or more of these rules will be asked to end their comments. And speakers or non-speakers who attend the meeting whose conduct disrupts the orderly and dignified content of any public meeting at any time will be asked by the chair to leave such meeting.
Thank you, Rita. At this time, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Our first item of business underneath the consent agenda is to consider the minutes for the February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Sure, everybody's had time, looked those over, so. Everybody ready to make the motion?
Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes from the February meeting.
They moved and seconded that we approved the minutes from the February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried, five-oh. Second item of business this evening is to consider the report of fees for the month of February twenty twenty-four. Anybody got any questions for Bob or Lisa on anything?
No. I do not.
If not, I have a motion.
I'll go to accept the report of fees from March twenty twenty-four.
You mean February.
What says March? It says March.
Oh.
Okay, March.
I'll definitely get that corrected.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All, all those opposed, motion carried, five-oh.
I seconded it. Thank you.
Yes. At this time, we don't have any business underneath the general agenda of the Riley County Board of Zoning Appeals. Do I have a motion to move on to the general agenda of the Planning Board? So move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we move on to the Riley County Planning Board. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, motion carried. All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes. Yes.
I just wanted to disclose that I live in University Park, which is a thing, subdivision for Agenda Item Four-One. I can act impartially on this item, I just wanted to declare that I live in San Diego.
Okay, thank you. I take it nobody else has anything? At this time, we'll have Bob come up and give us a staff report for petition twenty-four zero zero three. Bob?
With Joe, that was a test with that more shriveling thing, let's see if you. Okay, good evening, everyone. Now, welcome to the new projector, isn't it nice and pretty?
Oh, my God.
Yeah. I have to pull down the brightness. Yeah, actually, good evening. Daniel Maple has made application with the Riley County Planning and Development Department requesting to replat lots two eighty-eight, two eighty-nine, two ninety, and two ninety-one. Addition number one to University Park into one lot. A reminder, it is the responsibility of the planning board to make a finding that the final plot meets the minimum requirements of the subdivision regulations filed in the Riley County Land Development Regulations. It's the rule of this particular action tonight. The subject site is generally located approximately five hundred and forty feet north of Highview Drive, on the east side of Mount Ridge Road in University Park. The subject property was originally planted as lots two eighty-eight, two eighty-nine, two ninety, and two ninety-one of addition number one to University Park in December of nineteen sixty-three and later zone residential during the nineteen seventy-four zoning conversion process. The applicant wishes to combine the eight permissioned lots into a single lot in order to build an accessory structure. There is not a request or requirement to rezone the property at this time. The property was zone A-one, single-family residential during the zoning conversion process of nineteen seventy-four, as mentioned previously. The name of the zoning district was changed in January twenty twenty-two to SF-two, single-family residential with the adoption of the Riley County Land Development Regulations. There are no variances, conditional uses, or stubble uses associated with property. The Riley County Fire District Number One will continue to serve the site. The nearest county fire station is the University Park Fire Station located at seventy-four twelve Redside Drive. The subject site is located within five, five road miles of a fire station. This is the final plot illustrating the orientation and location of the new lots boundaries. Although the lot lines will be vacated as a result of this action, there are two existing utility easements located on-site that will not be vacated with this replat. The replat will also serve to locate the existing accessory structure on the same lot as the principal building, bringing it into compliance with the current development regulations. Few pics of the site. So standing on the east driveway line of Mount Ridge Drive, this is the single-family dwelling occupying current lot number twenty-nine, or two, excuse me, two ninety-one in the driveway that serves it. The subject property has direct access to Mount Ridge Road, paved two-lane local road maintained by the county. Turning to my left, looking east, northeast at the front and side yard of the home. The site is served by central water and central sewer through the University Park County Benefit District. Moving more northeast along the right-of-way line, this is a pic of the second driveway to the site. And this turning southeasterly, this is a pic of the existing accessory structure located on existing lot two ninety-one. Looking across existing lot two ninety, this picture shows undeveloped existing lot two eighty-nine. And finally, looking across existing lot two eighty-nine, have lot two eighty-eight and the northeast part of the property. Staff recommends that the planning board approve the final plot of Maple Heights Edition as it has been determined that it meets the minimum requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations, particularly the subdivision regulations and the Riley County sanitary code. If you have any questions for me, let me field those, but this concludes my presentation.
Eric, do you have anything?
Nope.
Rita. Rita, anything for Bob?
No.
No, not yet. All right. Since we have nothing here for Bob, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. As we stated earlier, we'd like for you to go up to the podium, state your name, address. At this time, does the applicant have anything that she'd like to bring forward?
My name is Robert Lambert, seven two one three, Mount Ridge Drive, Manhattan, Kansas. We'd like to replat so we can put an additional structure on a building for storage. We're within all our county guidelines and regulations, that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, is there any opponents or proponents within one thousand feet that would like to speak? Proponents, proponents, sorry. Okay. We'll move on then, is there any opponents within one thousand feet that would like to make the statement? We have five minutes, we have five minutes.
Is it five or three?
No, I read five. I read five. I read the back to five.
I'm sorry, I was stuck on hurry, so.
It's five. You got time.
We're good?
Thank you. Hello, my name is James Slemaker, my home address is one 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 two six Lakeview Drive. I also own property at seventy-two hundred Mount Ridge Road. I currently serve as president of the University Park Improvement District Board. First off, University Park and its residents are not against replating property. Many of us have done it to build homes and secondary structures and plan to continue the practice. The majority of the residents at the last board meeting requested the University Park Board represent the community to protest the Maple replating request due to the reason behind their request, which if approved, will allow a donkey on Maple property. The donkey will be a secondary effect from land use that negatively impacts University Park properties. This is why I am here as a board member. University Park owns three acres, roughly three acres of private park adjacent to the Maple property and feels this replat would negatively affect the growth and traditional use of our community. The Maple property, and I notice the picture that came up did not show a donkey on the property. It showed a little bit of a fence, didn't show a donkey, didn't show the structure. The Maple property is currently in violation of the Riley County Land Development Regulations with a donkey located on it. When I notified Planning and Zoning of the donkey fenced on the Maple property, I was informed that they were aware and were assisting her in replating to comply with the Riley County Regulations, which is their job. The Planning and Zoning Department are allowing this violation to continue until this replating request is approved or denied. And I got that directly from the department myself, that's not secondhand. If I understand correctly, Riley County, Riley County Planning Board does many things, and I couldn't list them all because you guys do a bunch of them, but including quote, and the quotes are for the folks that maybe not know all the things these guys do, quote, implementation of the conferencey plan through the adoption and of appropriate land development regulations. Protect landowners from any adverse impacts associated with the development occurring on neighboring property. Prevent secondary effects from land use that could negatively affect nearby property, unquote. That's right out of the, out of their mandate. This community believes the Maple replat request should be not, should be denied to prevent the secondary effect of livestock on the property. Livestock is inappropriate and outside the bounds of traditional use of our properties. If this replat request is approved, the community feels our property values will diminish due to the incitely presence of livestock, manure smell, and donkey noise. And if you've never heard a donkey bray on a Sunday happening lunch, you, you know what I'm talking about. When conflicts arise with third parties, in the case of University Park, quote, regulations are not intended to revoke or repeal any easements, covenants, or other private agreements, unquote. It's right out of your guidance document. This replat approval would require University Park to fund legal action to enforce the amended covenants of restrictions dated twelve June two thousand one, item six, no livestock shall be kept on any lot. This financial hardship on our residential community will only be needed if you approve this replat request. Planning and zoning, in my opinion, planning and zoning should not have moved forward with this plan to replat the Maple property, allowing her to comply with Riley County Regulations while in violation of University Park covenant. That's my interpretation, so I'd be curious if I'm wrong. The development standards are, quote, to protect and enhance residential neighborhoods, commercial districts, and rural areas by encouraging physical development that is of high quality and is compatible with the character, scale, and function of its surrounding area, unquote. So when you vote on approving or denying the Maple replat, please consider if you are protecting and enhancing our residential community from future livestock encroachment, because that is what this is about. So also, and, and I just reiterate again, in, in the document clearly says, prevent secondary effects from land use that could negatively impact nearby property. And replating is primary to get in the donkey on the block. So, that's as the, as the board, as a board president of the board. So as an owner of the property directly across Mount Ridge, the result of this replat will negatively affect, negatively impact my family with a financial hardship of lower property value, lower quality, life, increased noise pollution, and potentially an odor of livestock manure. I just got my twenty twenty-four Riley County praise evaluation for the Mount Ridge property, and it increased twenty-four thousand eight hundred fifty dollars. Which is, you know, a lot. There is no way, if the Maple replat request is approved, that my property directly across the street increases, I'm sorry, there is no way, if the Maple replat request approved, my property directly across the street increases, and I will be appealing my evaluation notice. I have spoken to other homeowners and they intend to take the same action. This is why I'm here as a property owner, thank you for your consideration. Any questions for me?
I don't see any. No, no, thank you. Is any, is there any other opponents, opponents within one thousand feet that would like to speak? All right. Does the applicant have a rebuttal or anything?
We have had a donkey on, on the property since before October. Um, the farm livestock concurred, the university park is surrounded by farmlands, there's none but cattle around. You hear cows in the morning, you want to hear cows. So, I mean, you're not going to enjoy them, you're not going to get away from them. Okay, um, I think it's more of an emotional refund from University Park that far as other items that have been concerned, but like I mentioned, we're legally allowed to replat our property and we still want to do so. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. At this time, I don't see any other opponents that, so I guess we'll move on to closing the public hearing and going into our deliberation, deliberation mode. Do I have a motion to do so? So move. It's been moved and seconded that we go into our deliberate, close a public hearing and go into our deliberation mode. So, to you, Eric.
The, the proposal is just to put together three properties, right?
Yep, like we've done the last meeting.
That has nothing to do with what's allowed on the property, other than that it's still zone residential.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. Rita, you got anything?
As I understand it, I think if it's, if it's over an acre, you can have an animal that's livestock, is that true, Bob?
You have one stock animal per acre.
One stock animal per acre. I guess it would be, right now, it's, it's, seems it's illegal in the county and in the covenants. But it would still be illegal under the covenants. But it would still be illegal under the covenants of the community, which are not enforced by the county. So by approving it one place, it's still illegal the other place. And it would cause hardship to the community because the county would not enforce the the action, it would require lawyers and lawsuits and things of that nature.
Joe, you got any?
I'm going to agree here, you know, seems like it's being replanted in the usual term there. Right?
Yep.
And it meets the current county regulations. And the issue seems to be with the community. They've got a covenant evidently that doesn't allow livestock. And I guess the county getting involved in that. That's my, that's my day's question.
But the county doesn't allow it. Today, it is not allowed on the property, correct? In the counties either? Explain the livestock to this, Bob.
In the, in the regulations, section it is specifically, but it allows for residential livestock. At one time, stock animals were only permitted in large lots, single-family residential zoning districts per single family. Other than that, but it got changed because of the parameters, or really, if you had one acre, you could have another stock animal. It was one per acre. So that's where it got laid out for all the single-family residential districts. The way we approach things, if someone is found to be in violation, they have different strategies to abate that violation. And one of them is going through the formal process to right the wrong. That's what, part of the issue here, that's along with it. But again, the role of the board is not necessarily to focus on the reason why it's being replanted. That's not how it works. This is not a quasi judicial action. Is it meet the subdivision regulation or not? Now, it would bring that property into compliance with that, and also bring the accessory structure that's on there right now onto the same lot as the principal structures. So whether they plan on keeping that accessory structure or not, who knows? But if they were, it would bring that into compliance with the current code. So there's the multiple things going on here. But really what it comes down to is the reasoning behind it, even though I empathize with the community, this is one of those, it's black and white.
It's a replat like we've done lots of times. It seems about like every meeting we do a replat.
Here's something else I want to add. We've had replats before where the, there was restrictive covenants. And the one covenant that was being violated was to subdivide the property. We were told by our legal staff, we'd go through the process regardless of that restricted covenant. It's the right of the property owner to be heard by the board, go through that process. We're not bound to the restrictive covenant. So that's something else to consider.
Yeah.
Does that answer your question, Joe?
Yes, it does.
Jack, do you have anything?
I'm on the same page with Joe. I think we're treading on thin ice if we start getting involved in neighborhood covenants. I mean, this is, they follow all the planning and zoning regulations. I think it's best to let the neighborhood association do what they may.
So yeah, like I said, this is a replat of these three lots, four lots. It seems like in the last number of years, in University Park, in Blue River Hills, other places, we've, we've done a lot of these to make things come in right, so. Anyhow, so I guess that being said, do I have a motion?
Well, go ahead and move to approve the request to replat lots 288, 289, 290, and 291. An addition number one, University Park into one lot, should be known as Maple Heights Edition, which has been determined that it meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the request to replat lots 288, 289, 290, 291 of addition number one to University Park into one lot, known as a Maple Heights Edition, as it has been determined that it meets the requirements of the Riley County Land Development Regulations. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, motion carries.
I'm going to go, stay.
Okay, so it'd be 4-0.
4-0.
So, Bob, you have?
Yeah, public service announced that the board of county commissioners might hear this request on March 21st at 10:30 a.m. in these chambers. For those who are planning on attending.
All right, thank you. At this time, we still have several items on our agenda for this evening. If you'd like to stay, you're more than welcome to. If you're not, you can dismiss yourselves, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you, guys. Okay. If you don't, if you're going to visit, if you wouldn't mind taking your conversation beyond the first door or aiming outside so we can continue our, our business, so. Bob?
I think request to switch a couple items, number two and three on the agenda.
Okay.
And move to discussion of the LDR amendments. One, if we can comprehend the plan amendment or updates, that's the last.
Okay.
So if you would, fill your agenda packet. I made this a little easy to see.
Yeah, we've got a new projector. We want to be able to see something.
Okay, there's quite a few. These are proposed for discussion. They're not all of them. This is the first dash, if you will. See if I can bring this up. It needs to be. So, these are essentially in order, as they appear in the regulations. So there's three parts that are related to one another, but they're separated there because they just, where they fall in the actual code. That makes sense. So, starting off here, see. And this is, I believe this was an insertion. Here's the insertion, and we, we reordered this. This is section 3.21 for building permits. The biggest change here was the, the, this was, how can I say this? This was one of those things that was allowed through policy through our office, but it was really not codified. And we thought it'd be better to have it in here to lay it out saying, yes, you can or no, you can't. And so what it came down to this is, we've had situations where a building permit is issued for a house. House gets about halfway built, and then they decide to sell. They sell the property and what's left of the house, and to be built of the house. And so the question is, can that building permit be transferred from one party to another? And it was, it was discussed years ago, and it was, it was found that that would be appropriate either through another property owner or to a contractor or whatever it may be. But the building permit is for the house itself. So whoever finishes it, all right, so. But with that, we would, we would like to have the information, you know, from whoever is now receiving the permit. So would you see the number six there in italics? I'm not sure. Yeah, bump up the test a little bit more.
So while you're looking at that, I do have a question. So just for, so like if, I'm a building contractor, I'm going to build Rita a new house. No. I come in, it's, I'm taking care of their building permit underneath my contract or underneath my business. I've seen that on the, on the building permits over the years. I've seen a few of those.
Now, let's say in the middle of that, you decide you've had enough and you're moving to Florida.
Right.
And you want to transfer that to a new contractor, or first of all, you just want to arrange that. It shows here, number six here, the holder of an approved building permit may transfer, assign, or otherwise convey the permit to another permanent person or entity without obtaining a new building permit, providing a new application for building permits filed with the department, and no additional fee upon transfer of the property.
Does this cover any changes that may be made by the new owner to the building permit itself?
Yes, I would believe so. I don't know, if they're extravagant, you know, they might hit a fee. Typically, it's just to finish the house. And as I said, again, you know, it's like anything else, if we have a quarry or something like that, and it changes hands, if the conditional use still runs with the property, that kind of thing, it's similar to that.
Okay.
So, and I think this is a little misleading here. What you can see here is a little shift in the, the sequence of the items here in this, this list. And so the, I believe number seven here is the last thing. And the only new thing in here is that we can see in it, that's the only addition. But we just had to resequence.
So Bob, back to your analogy of a quarry transferring. So there's a quarry for limestone. And then when they transfer, the new owner wants to, instead of limestone, he wants a diamond mine. Now, that would change it. So I, I think that, I think that you need a caveat in there that, that it can be transferred subject to no, no change in the building permit. In other words, if they change the building permit, then they have to get a new building permit if they're going to change it substantially. And I don't know whether you want to use that term or some other legal term, because that changes the real use that the building permit was approved for. That's, that's all I'm trying to say is, is you got to be careful on that kind of, I think.
Could you do something about that the, the same setback's applied, like you're still in the same envelope or something?
Well, I mean, substantially just needs to stay the same. In other words, instead of building a mansion, if they go down in size, that's not a big deal. But if they say, okay, I'm going to build a, a five, you know, tier mansion with six wings, and the original building permit was for one wing, and 2005 was your square footage.
What's that?
Let me stick with the intent.
Right.
Because usually on the building permits, there's a square footage of what the house or what the building's going to be on the building permit. And then that's like you're saying, that's what it needs to stay instead of.
If it's going to transfer.
Yeah. Okay. That's, that makes sense, yeah.
Sounds good. Well, we are taking notes of this, make sure that, you know, it's special. One thing I want to mention is, the LDR amendments will go to both planning boards. So go to the Riley County Planning Board and the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board. If you recall, the zoning regulations go up to the city limits.
Right.
They go in there, the jurisdiction of the Manhattan Urban Area Planning. So, you know, weigh in on discussion as well.
Sure.
Maybe not quite as heavy as you guys. Now go on to where that commission. Okay, so moving on. Any other discussion on this topic? Okay. Section 3.8A. This was supposed to be, in the LDR, it was suggested by our planning consultant that helped us with the land development regulations, with the government. And, or like me, I'm not sure how it didn't get in. But we had to think back, and we went looking for it, and this is essentially the, the language that was supposed to be in there. And so what this does, the, the first part of this, where it's the preliminary discussion by planning board, we remove, the department may also propose text amendments to the appropriate authority in the event that amendment is primarily to clarify language, correct errors, or provide more efficient administration of the regulations. That may have been what we, we thought we were given, but what we, number two is the administrative text amendments. That's what we intended. That's exactly what she was trying to say, that you want to be able to make these minor, I mean, minor clerical errors and correct these things without having to go through a public hearing over typos. Something like that.
We had a similar paragraph in our work for St. Louisburg. And it allowed you, if there was wording wrong or typos, you could just fix it.
Missing word.
Missing words, yeah, yeah, we had the same paragraph.
Okay, so that's, that's. Didn't we do that for something else, though, too, in the last number of years? I remember us talking about that. Maybe this was it, and it never got put in there, maybe that was.
Yeah, I think so. And the other thing you might be, I think, you know, there's an administrative adjustment.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's an actual action, and there's frameworks on that as well. This is something different. This is applying to the whole, whole LDR. Okay. So, a few things that we noticed about licenses is that some people were wanting to be able to transfer a license. And there's a number of, we have the STR license, but we also have annual operating licenses for quarries and manufactured home park. And this is what we added here. So all license fees shall be for a calendar year and all that. New owner acquiring a manufactured home park at any time during the life of a valid annual operating license may continue to operate under that license to the end of that calendar year. Right? The owner certifies to and abides by all or any of the conditions contained in that license and notifies the department immediately upon transfer ownership. So there was, there's a little bit lacking there that when this happens, there's really no requirement that they notify us, and it's kind of critical, so. But that's what that's. Section 4.3, by the way, is there any questions on the operating license?
I mean, just make the sound.
Just a notification, pretty much. So moving on then, section 4.3, lots and structures. This is for, I believe the, okay, yeah. There is the, in this particular language here, it was based on a principal building. Or I believe it was used, right? And, am I in the right place? I strictly hold it, so, except for.
Yeah, we were saying that principal use intake of multiple buildings.
Yes. And that we have, that's a good example, that is the individual storage units, but it's multiple buildings on the same lot under the same use and all that. And how do we, how do we classify that? And we feel that the. And uh we feel that the um the language is uh has been introduced here. Uh and and it really focuses on, say, you know, the commercial or industrial zone lots, there'll be no more than one principal building per lot. Um and that allows commercial industrial zone lots to have that that prior, that that flexibility. Um and commercial and or industrial zone lots with one or more principal uses may have multiple principal buildings. But storage buildings, garages, and other clearly accessory uses shall not be considered principal buildings. I seen the um the way it was worded, it was it was conflict on some things, and we were trying to figure out a way to reconcile that through. Is it, so if it's multiple buildings, it's one principal building, and so you can't, you can only have one principal building or lot or tract. And when it's clearly not accessory, and so how do we do that? And so this this uh allows it to happen.
I think it would read better to me if the except for commercial industrial lots was at the end of that sentence. Like, if every building, no more than for written, it's all building on one lot lot, and then. Except for commercial and industrial lots, I got I got lost in all that, cause I went to the. Uh maybe it doesn't read bad. That would be my only suggestion.
Yeah, if you're gonna do that, though, you probably ought to make that uh a second sentence, and you need to define. Commercial and industrial zoned lots, what they can have.
Well, that's that's in the code.
Okay.
That's already.
And and that I would refer them to that section of the code. So that there's no question about what applies and what doesn't.
Well, okay.
But, that's.
One of the things that maybe we should have brought out is the LDR itself, so you can see what I'm talking about. Um. Yeah, and the uh, well, I maybe we can just uh.
Cause I'll explain that with them, uh, search for point three, what is under?
The currently uh industrial zones are in table five. Three, I think.
And everything is laid out in that table.
So so you can say, you can say except for commercial or industrial zone lots in accordance with table three or whatever the table is. Cause that's your exception. For for those of us on the outside that aren't familiar with all of the LDRs implicitly, because we don't work with them every day. That's the only reason I say that, Bob.
Yep.
We can recite word for word like you can.
I hopefully refers to it, cause it's pretty complex, but.
Um so uh the last sentence, um are you seeing where, how that's read, read over, do you want that changed and we can switch? That the problem with that is that that last half, but storage billions and garages and all that is like.
Oh, I was okay with that.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
With, I think, uh what Eric is suggesting is that if we do that, we move commercial and industrial zone lots. To the end of the first, where that the first comma is.
Right.
And and then just take out the word but and then say store, start over, stored buildings, garages, and other third accessories, so. Not be considered principal buildings.
Right.
This is for clarity?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That. Anything else on that one? Okay, uh this was uh, and I'm not sure how, I think we were pretty thorough in in finding all. Uh pieces, but I, we we do have to make an absolute check, this is again for discussion. Um one of the things that we were noticing is that some um some confusion as what is considered. Um vehicles, equipment, sales, and service. And that service uh was going along, going along with vehicle sales. So what is considered service or what is considered uh heavy auto uh automobile repair? And we have both, and so we were we were having some, we were struggling with that and getting people to understand the difference. And I don't think uh this was as clear as it needed to be. So essentially what we have here, imagine uh like any other car dealership, whether it be Briggs. Or Murdoch, uh where Get Urban used to be and all that, um um they have their sales. They're selling their used cars or even new cars, but they also have a service garage for.
Yeah.
For whatever maintenance, you know, as dealerships usually have, essentially that's what it is. And uh there's a difference between that, let's say, and auto body or transmission repair. Replacement and or engine repair, yeah, it's a little bit different. So we uh we did a little bit of a research and looked at what the city had. And uh they uh actually had the uh divided up into light and heavy, and then defined it. And so uh instead of having automobile repair, we have the same thing, but then we we just classify this heavy. And then define it in the article, article line, you know, definition. That's not sitting here, that's further down on the list here, and that's why I was telling you, it's not all in the same spot, competition will be. Kinda leapfrogged to uh that that, you'll be able to see that that's how it is uh defined, and we'll help, we'll come back to this one. But essentially, we're not changing it, we're not saying, yes, you can do, you can't kind of thing, we're just making it clear where the line is. Uh the the biggest one, and and uh, just letting you know. Um the biggest thing is that the vehicles, equipment, and sales and service, the light category. Should probably occur in the highway business, the C two highway business, zoning district, it's a commercial activity primarily. When it comes to uh the the heavier stuff like paint shops, auto body, that kinda thing, that's more of an industrial use. Um requires a lot more um that heavy industrial type of uh uh activity to get the to perform the work. And so that that was agreed that as it is now, that's in the, and that's industrial uh zoning district. So again, it's it's primarily the, what you see is the the name of it. And then it's it's clarified in the definition of what constitutes light and what constitutes heavy, so it's clear as to what's going on.
So you, so you're saying that that auto body work constitutes as heavy?
Yeah, heavy.
And why? A heavy what?
Heavy service, if you will, primarily.
Okay, cause I mean, unless you're working on semis, there's like local auto body jobs, that's light work to me, I guess, that's not heavy.
Like would be like uh oil changes and things like that, again, I I I can just jump ahead if you wanna see it.
Flip a page, you can see the.
Yeah, 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 but I'm just, yeah, I just, I guess, yeah, I. I had my thoughts on that, yeah, okay, it's, sometimes I wonder if you're getting. Too technical, just leave it as it is, but.
Definitions back here.
Oh, no, okay.
They define what it is.
It's it's uh again, it's gonna be a lot more helpful. When people wanting to do something like that, considering whether they can or can't, and we didn't have that clarity in there, so.
I think I know where you're getting that on the seat.
Wait.
Are these the definitions?
Well, I mean, I think we got some 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 places in the county that's that. They say they're light, but they're really heavy and.
Well, that could really be for any, anyone who wants to stretch the zone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But so, to define it better in my mind, the Caterpillar dealer out on K eighteen. Is that light or heavy?
Uh well, I I mean, that'd be heavy.
I would think it would be heavy, but 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 there's sales and service.
Right, there's, that's there, that's what I'm getting at, yeah, that's, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, that's sales and service, I mean. So up at Leonardville, we have a guy that does Baylor sales, and I mean, that's.
But agriculture is, it's not, it is different.
Yes, but, yeah. But it's, but but it's heavy equipment, definitely.
That's, that's, the question is, you know, is heavy construction equipment, is that heavy equipment, heavy equipment repaired? Or is it light?
Provided up with some commercial or industrial.
Yeah.
Are we doing that?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, primarily, I mean, you're not gonna get rid of that.
No.
It's a good question, though. Yeah, what what about cata- Caterpillar? Typically, it's not, you're not gonna see a lot of the. You know, dealerships like Dondear or Caterpillar, you know, out in your your districts, you know. And a lot of times it's, it's, it falls into the, you know, vehicles and of this sales and service, Charles, and you. And this is, this is a carryover that that does not include farm machinery prepared, that's a carry, that's what we have right now.
There's a lot of exemptions for uh estate statutes too.
Exactly.
So, that's why you gotta be careful with that.
Yeah. So that's, so that's it, um again, you know, it's it's a little bit more descriptive, a little bit more inclusive, you can kinda see a clear line. A clearer line, um it is a get funding once in a while, probably.
Okay.
But.
I just wanted to hear what what your thoughts were on that.
Uh we we feel uh that it's a step in the right direction.
Okay.
Um it's 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 uh it's making an improvement in forty degrees to what we have now. Okay, so land uses, uh this is the the land use table. And for site-built residents, okay, so uh when we were preparing uh the LDR. One of the things that was uh seemed to plague the department and other places. Is the allowance for uh residents in the commercial and zoning or industrial zoning districts. And then what was happening is, people would get their business going and they 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 could. Literally build a house or bring in a house and for the owner or operator of that business. And then then at that point, they would separate that off through a lot. And then they would need to rezone it, so then you have this nice little spot of a single-family residential, right in the middle of where they're trying to. You know, uh grow their, you know, their commercial uses. And so that creates an incompatibility, uh we do allow for uh uh as. Sleeping quarters, if you will, inside the commercial or industrial building, it's not a house. So this right here, uh this five point one, it it allows for, you know, these uh state-built residents as well, that that's not true. And so if we felt that was a bit misleading, and so we decided that that this uh probably needs to be changed. Just removed from that P uh needs to be removed from the 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 categories of the C one, C two. I want an I two zoning districts. That's what that's about. While we're at it. Short-term rental is not on the table or the table of land uses. And I think the reason why is uh, it's it's essentially at this point in time. Um unless things change, say if we have a residence, you can have a short-term rental if you get the license. If you need the license and the requirement, you can do that, matter of words, uh. But nonetheless, we thought it would be better if we could. Be a little bit more specific as to where they are, where they should be, where residences should be going. And so that's where they are in the SF one, two, and three, the two-family, multifamily. Even the manufactured home park could have a short-term rental, if you could get that to work out with the park. Uh AG, general agricultural, um AG, the our residential use designator. Areas, uh university-owned and university-affiliated uh zoning districts. Could have a residence, could have an S T R, just try to be consistent in the application of it.
But today you could have one anywhere, like an industrial zoning.
There's a house there.
Yeah.
If it meets the regulations.
Yeah, if it meets it, right.
Okay, I guess.
So we felt that this, I I think tightens that up, and I'm not sure if we really truly have. A house that's an actual STR in a commercial or industrial zoning district, uh I'm not aware of any. But that doesn't mean they don't exist. So that's what we're we're after there, and so uh we also had some uh some questions on bed and breakfasts. And how they differ from the short-term rental. By definition, uh the a a bed and breakfast is a is an STR, essentially. Um traditionally, though, uh it came with the an older occupied dwelling. And it with or without means, or laundry services or anything else. That it was owner occupied, where STRs typically are not, as mentioned earlier. So that's what that is, and we should, we thought we could step ahead and maybe uh add that to the uh use table. Make it clear that's where it's at. Any questions on that one? Suggestions or anything? Okay. Do you use specific standards? This is a, this is the agritourism facility license. Uh agritourism facility license is issued to the specific owners. Or owner or owners of the property and does not run with the property. Uh the license shall not be transferred or assigned to another person. Or individual person, entity, or address, but may be managed by a third party or on behalf of the owner. And I think that that's one of those licenses that didn't have anything really, oh, can you transfer or not, you know? No, it's really, uh it's not only uh does it run with the property, but it kinda runs with uh the the farmer, because the. The agricultural or agritourism facility is based on agricultural operation. And so that's, that license does not transfer, you have to get a new license.
But somebody, but a third party could manage it for the owner.
Yeah. Absolutely, and then this is similar to uh an STR. Short-term rental, they could get someone to be the manager here in town, because they live in a different city or a different state, whatever. Absentee-style landlord, okay. Am I going too fast?
No, I'm I'm just thinking about the the agri-agro tourism business and. One of the things that, when you look at a business, is there's intangibles that are sold with it. So if I sell a agritourism business, I wanna be able to sell the business as an entity. And that may impinge on the the value of that business. So I think we need to be real careful about that. It's not that we're not gonna, not gonna grant another license, what we're trying to say is that. It's licensed for a specific person, person and a purpose.
Right, this that's kind of why we don't wanna do that, just, you know, hand it over to somebody else.
No, no, I I understand that, but.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okay, uh so other one, I think uh the licensing requirements, just the excavation was telling you about. By quarries, license is issued to a specific operator of the extraction operation and does not run with the property. License shall not be transferred or assigned to another individual, person, entity, or address. Why is this important? Usually, there is a performance bond or a letter of credit associated with the reclamation of the site, there's a lot going on there. There's surface mining things, you know, through the state, and so uh when the there's a switch halfway. We've had this, we've experienced, um for a quarry, it changes hands. Um that we would like to get all the information, get the letter of credit correct, so it's it's still good. Um it's it's from the firm owner and so on, so that's that's why when, you know. Any changes that can happen over the course of time of that quarry. We wanna make sure the license is uh is on the operator, the current operator, the current owner. Any questions on this, any discussion?
I mean, that's just, it just makes sense, I mean, from doing. The deal with buyers over the couple of, over the last couple of years with Stevens Quarry, you know, when they wanted to expand. You know, they got a lot of paperwork that they got to provide to the state of Kansas. And whatnot, and it's just, yeah, it's, yeah, it makes sense.
Yeah, you might recall the McCoy's.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, come on, there's there's two out there. I just can't remember which one left first. Um, so uh but that that.
We did first and then the second one was the other.
Ruth.
Yeah.
Ruth.
He was from down in Walbunsey County.
Yeah.
And he wanted to do one too. I don't know if they still exist or not.
Yeah. So there were some, there were some issues there. And so I I think, again, because of the 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 different requirements for this type of use, um, even with the conditional use, uh, the licensing is still an annual thing that they have to do and it comply with the standards thereof. And it's it's just, I'd like, uh, like God said, I think it makes sense that to to keep it current. Okay, moving on. See, uh, we we talked about earlier about problems with stock animals and and probably uh not so good areas to um to consider happy. Uh, and we call that just uh incompatibility.
Yeah.
There is a reason why we uh the the current comprehensive plan and the regulations um emphasize agricultural preservation and uh keeping non-farm residences out of highly productive agricultural areas. There's a reason for that. Uh, and that goes along with the uses are tied to that farm or ranch are incompatible with those residential uh uh uses that have nothing to do with agriculture.
Right.
And so the it the switch or the flip side or the the uh, yeah, this is the flip side of that. I want to call it that. It's the same. We don't want to invite agricultural uses, zoning, it's like having in the middle of highly high density uh established uh neighborhoods.
Exactly.
Residential. So I I I really felt that we had something at one time that got missed. Either missed or it was misjudged. And I I think that was a critical mistake, in my opinion. And we we this evening, you get to experience exactly what that meant.
Yep.
The negative impact of that. And so my my uh my suggestion or our our suggestion as a department is to uh remove uh the uh the ability to have stock animals in the S two and S F three districts. S F one is a minimum of two acres. That's the minimum lot size for S F one zoning district. And that's essentially the same as the S F four, S F five that we had uh prior to the L D R. And that's where that stock animal allowance was. And that worked out pretty good because you can, for the most part, if planning requirements is at twenty acres, you can have a an eighteen-acre lot, nineteen-acre lot zoned S F one and have plenty of room.
Yep.
So, uh, yeah, you might, you you'd be able to get your stock animals, you know, if you have that two-acre minimum. Usually you're not going to have that right in the middle of a uh the zoning district like University Park. And it keeps the compatibility, um, uh, I I think, uh, better off. Now, there are other things in here that uh in the the residential livestock, that you can have ducks, chickens, and and maybe geese, hinnies, like a few other things, you can do that. So we'll have to come back. And one of the things that I forgot to put in here is uh we have a maximum allowances for each of those uh animals, um, but we'll have an overall combination.
Yeah.
So you can literally have fifty, you know, birds flying around and uh maybe not a good thing. Um, maybe overload the uh what was intended
Right.
For the allowance. So uh we'll, I I guess this is a good start. Um, that'll be surprisingly maybe a bit too late, but hopefully. Um, so this is what we have at in addition. We also added a few other uh things you see in italics. Like, uh, we had horses, cows, pigs, sheep as examples, or goats. Those are those are examples, but over the years since I've been here, there's been a lot of other things that people want to have either as pets or or uh a a a small herd of alpacas, uh llamas, and donkeys, mules, that kind of thing. You know, and it, I think it 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 serves this well to get at least those examples in here. We've also had emus and uh ostriches, but it's it's they're more rare and and quite frankly than what you will see here. Any questions on this? Moving on.
Can I ask one? Am I allowed to chair this?
Let's just.
Just a question.
Sure, just one, yeah.
Do you like me to stand up or just talk?
Oh. I go up there, state, please.
Yes.
Name and address, yep.
My name is Carlos Slaymaker. I live at one 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 two six Lakeview Drive. And my question is, I'm excited to see this, but my question is, because there was a replat passed an hour ago or however long ago, that when it was passed, a donkey was allowed in an S F two district, which is very residential. Um, does that mean that donkeys grandfathered in if this change takes place? So are we stuck with that donkey because of this timeframe?
Bob. Bob, Bob, my play skill.
Yes. Yeah, we're. Um.
Is it grandfathered?
Well, we haven't established that yet. Um, the Board of County Commissioners are the ones that established any grandfathering on anything.
Okay.
As you recall, the the short-term rental with the the day we uh adopted the L D R in January first, twenty twenty-two, we were immediately uh hit with this has to be changed. Immediately. So we were already working on the amendment because it was in the heart and the way the their regulations read, uh, those types of things were grandfathered in. And uh that's not what the intent was. The intent was by the the commissioners that they be applied effective immediately. Uh, the the, at least the 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 thing that they took into consideration, it might take a little bit of time to get, uh, you know, the to meet the standards and uh make the 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 dwelling end up or bring the bring the dwelling into compliance with the regular, the new licensing requirements, because there was nothing before. Nothing to go off of. So uh they granted them a year grace period to come into compliance, one year. After that, there was no grandfathering. Now, I don't know, again, there are some suggest, we can make suggestions as far as effective immediately. Um, but I I again, you know, I'm not sure how they would play with that. Uh, again, the uh the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board will also make suggestions on how that works. Um, and then the Board of County Commission has to, if they want to just allow that to happen and allow the the donkey to live out its life and after, you know, I mean, after a while, I mean, it's not, it's not permanent. The donkey will have a life.
So.
And they're not allowed. It would not be allowed after that.
So as if you just, if you, if I understand what you just said, we could, we could adopt this tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. Get it right in there, okay. Hey, it don't hurt to try. Yeah, I know.
Commissioner chapter.
Yeah, I know. Well, we can. Yeah.
We can recommend.
Oh, yeah, we could recommend proof.
Yeah. So what we're going to do with this process, we're not quite done yet. It's for discussion. I'll have the other planning board and have a discussion. Then what we'll do is we'll assemble it into uh the suggestions, things into a staff report and get a little bit more specific and more descriptive of whether we just appear to battle and on about it, get a little bit more uh descriptive as to what the impacts, pros, cons of the change being proposed and what the planning board's recommended as the change. Uh, and then it goes to public hearing, that brings comes it go, it comes back to this board and it also goes to the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board. Then those those uh the changes there or whatever you decide at that point, yeah, it it becomes a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. And they're the ones that make the changes. That's how it works.
So just to, excuse me, just to clarify, usually these things are not retroactive. So whatever is happening, let's say, tonight, and let's just say for ease of conversation, we approve this in a month. Whatever is happening now, it's not going to take away unless they specifically write that, although that's true. Because S T Rs were a little bit of a different situation, as Bob explained. And we wanted to make sure we captured all of them, not just from there forward. So generally, then you have a a regulation change, whatever is happening currently, like, let's say you have a residence in X zone, but then we say, and Luke says you can't have a residence, we're not going to make you get rid of your residence, it just becomes a longer warranty.
Yes.
So so really, these aren't retroactive, so if don't says there, I think you'll be able to stay. I mean, as I pointed out, it won't be forever, but that's generally how I think that's going. Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Um, it is is, um, their solution is just not going to be immediate if this goes through. That's what I was.
For the life of the dog.
Yeah. And who knows? All right. Things happen. And I'm not suggesting you have to govern that, what you don't.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, guys.
You're fine, thank you.
Good night.
Have a good evening. Okay. Next up.
Take the whole box. Take the whole box.
It is, that is uh associated with uh second six point three riparian buffer. And uh it was uh, did we have two parts here? Just one, yeah, I think we did, we left the uh. So we were taking a look at the table of uh uses that you could do in either buffer buffer zone one, buffer zone two um in in the on a riparian uh buffer. And again, this is uh pretty much on the banks of a water body, when trees and stuff. So we have creeks, you know, streams, rivers even, you know, but uh the uh the buffers are divided into the the nears to the bank, right off the bank, and then from a point of uh there fifty feet or so further out. But what kind of uses that are allowed in those? And so uh uh, one of the things that uh our planning compliance specialists pointed out that uh uh, it there wasn't any any mention of uh commercial industrial buildings, you know, or structures. Um, are they, are they allowed? I mean, it was really focusing in on residential. Why? Because the majority of the development in the county is residential. But it 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 really kind of is like a missing piece there that could have been taken advantage of. So we thought, uh, well, you know, the we we don't think that if non-agricultural residences are are prohibited, you know, use, then by shipping, commercial, and industrial uh buildings, something, it had to be afforded the same, you know, prohibition, if you will.
It's almost like somebody's already thought of it and it's someplace and it happened.
Somewhere.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I'm thinking of a lot of places in Topeka where it's happened.
But yeah, they're, I mean, it's it's a grass strip. I mean,
Yeah.
that's, yeah, but it's common, I mean.
It's nice flat ground, they want to build it out.
Yeah, that's a good, that's.
Obviously, there's, you know, there's uh floodplain regulations and things like that, right? You know, those aren't all inclusive, if either, if something could go, if it doesn't say it can. So uh we thought that would be a a good addition to the list. Any questions on that one? Okay. Okay, so going down the definitions, uh, another one that uh Darren found that we he had pointed out was the definition of an infected home of residential design. Uh, and it it states here a minimum of twenty-two body feet in width, excluding porch decks, awnings, carports, or attached garages. And he said, okay, uh, by our definition of attached garage, that's sharing a common wall. So it's really part of the principal building. So really, what they're trying to say here is anything is off of it. Um, and it it uh you mentioned it should be detached by definition. Because you can have a a detached garage with a carport or not a carport.
A breeze wave.
And so that essentially is an attached detached structure. And so uh people, this this would not count that twenty-two feet wide, including that bit. Um, it's it's a little odd because of the the width, um, and the the depth. The width of a manufactured home is is more the depth. And when you're facing one and lengthwise, that's the length. So it's not the width, if you're seeing the front door, that's width, no, that's the length. So the width is front to back. So that's how that's going to. Okay. And principal building, structure company and the principal use to which the property is devoted. Lots with multiple principal uses. Remember, this is the one we talked about earlier as far as use and principle building, principal use, when we took out that language. And left number two in, I don't know if there's any, was there was any change to number two? Not sure if we even needed to. Okay, and the uh this is going back uh uh to what we were talking about earlier about the difference between light and heavy. And uh just uh is as clear as possible as what counts as what. And you know, you can list a bunch of uh examples, a lot of um different things. And then there will be someone who goes, oh, what about this? And uh there might not be on the list, we're just going to have to kind of go like form base. You know, we're just going to like, well, this is a lot like this. We're going to kind of say generally disclosing to that category. Um, it it's it's a, it's a fine line between uh offering too many examples as a comprehensive list or not enough examples to make it clear as to what you're talking about. Okay. Now for the fun stuff. Okay.
Nine points four you want to talk about, right?
Okay, so what happened here, and I'm not going to read this out. Thank you. Actually. Uh, there was a uh nudity ordinance, uh, I certainly call it a resolution that was passed um, a few years ago, as in alongside the sexually oriented business, um, uh, ordinance, you will. Um, it's the code, sexually oriented, sexually oriented business code, that's what it's called. And this, uh, the the resolution was passed alongside of this um, at being more descriptive as to what was going on. Um, and uh this was not just like businesses, this was just general nudity or whatever, anywhere. And so it's outside the purview of a a single business, if you will, or an establishment. That's why that was done. Um, prior to that, uh, Riley County had nothing on that. Um, so they passed it and listed a bunch of things that you shouldn't see here crossed out. But then shortly thereafter, there was a, was it Supreme Court case?
It's a lawsuit in Colorado.
There was a lawsuit in Colorado.
To the Supreme Court, yes.
Yeah. And said, uh, no, that it's discriminatory. Uh, if males can walk around without a shirt on, so can females. And then so we had to pick up all that stuff that pretty much just to be consistent with that resolution. That a resolution was passed and updated that uh uh, the, you know, it was nudity or state of nudity in that resolution. So everyone knows it's the same stuff, it's consistent with that resolution. Right now, it's not consistent, that's why the change needs to be made.
Thanks.
Fair. And so that is it, um, with the first round of L D R amendments. Um, and at any point that you you do have the draft notice of public hearing, take a look at that some more. If you have any questions, any other suggestions for these, uh, feel free to get ahold of us. Uh, you have our numbers, email. But if uh this goes well, uh, we're looking at getting before the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board, I think on the twenty-eighth of this month for discussion. And if all goes well, we move forward with public hearings, uh, we're looking at May ninth. And so the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board, May thirteenth for this tour. And those will going to be recommendations. And those are gonna be recommendations to the Board of County Commission that they have not been set yet, but. So again, first batch, we have a few other things that uh we discovered a lot of record uh discussion that that's gonna be coming back because doing more extensive research on the dates and times of the regulations turned out it's not as uh, I don't know, it's uh cutting dried as it seems.
So I've always had issues, as you know that, with a lot of records.
Yeah.
You know, I I just have a, you know, but we'll get into that.
So a lot of record, when we were talking about grandfathering.
Yeah, that's that's what it is. Yeah, it's grandfathering, yeah.
And if there's any um real important thing as far as being able to develop new properties, that's that's on top, you know, maybe not a life of a donkey or whatever, but you know, you 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 bought a tract of land years ago and you're just now getting around to getting to build on it. And now you can't because of the regulations change. Well, it's a lot of record because it was legally established at that time. Whatever size it is and wherever it is. So we're gonna bring be bringing that back so uh for uh clarity and uh more explanation. And then you might, depending on uh your perspective, you might find it's it's uh well, it's tremendously more accurate than before. That's one, but it it might it might lend itself to even uh tightening it up, so it's not as uh as judicious as it was last. So that's all I have. And are there any questions for me?
Not that we haven't already asked. You don't think we've asked you enough, Bob?
Oh, we gotta continue on with our agenda.
Yeah.
All right, Joe. I like it this way, this way, it's all right.
Next thing, we're bringing candles.
Okay.
Floor lamps, floor lamps. I get through this week, get back used to daylight savings time.
Oh, I'm already used to it.
Today was National Napping Day.
Is it?
I found that out about two o'clock.
I couldn't be used to the old time. Yeah, and I just, what we've been on, I
I hate.
I'd still be up at five o'clock every morning.
I'm excited.
I got out of that habit when I quit working. Driving to speak every day, you gotta get up at five o'clock. That's if you're gonna go running before you go to work.
For you. So Amanda.
All right, y'all ready?
I don't know, are we? Okay, sprint through it.
Conference of Plan update, um just what we've been up to for the last few weeks, not just letting folks know. Um the survey data, it is out there, it is on our website, it is available. Um so we have it in a few different formats on the Comp Plan website, if you haven't had the chance to see it. Uh we have one report that's just just as is, exactly um how we collected it from the site. We didn't delineate anything, it's just all as it is. And then the second report is the same thing, just delineated by place of residence. So you're able to see like whoever answered from Leonerville, the the X amount of people answered from Leonerville. This is how they answer all the different questions. So no, you can't tell that, you know, Joe Smith from, you know, X address in Leonerville answered this way, but you know that the people who said, I live in Leonerville city limits, these were their answers basically to each of those questions. And then each of the open ended questions are also organized that way and they have their link on the website. So you could click on whatever the the question is, that open ended question, and they're all also delineated by however you selected your, do you live in Riley County? Yes. Where do you live? Of course, all the different cities, Manhattan, Ogden, Riley, Randolph, Leonerville Incorporated, Riley County. So we have it all delineated that way, so you can see within each of those categories how they can answer each of the questions. I'm happy to provide a hard copy if anybody wants one. It's not a small document, but I'm still happy to do if you guys are interested. If some some people haven't heard of, look at hard copies and that actually will come. You just let me know if that's what you prefer, so we can do that, but that is out there. Um, few different other public engagement options, if you will. At the website that I just mentioned, we have all kinds of information there. Um as you folks know, we did our eleven community meetings last fall, um are all around the county. And then you were part of the um community initiated Leonerville meeting in January. Um all of the inputs that we received through our meetings is there. Um also broken out based on um township meeting and the responses to each of those questions. Um we have a Comp Plan group, a lister, if you will, that has, uh we have over we've entered over a hundred, I know they have to, we've subscribed them and I believe if I'm correctly, so they have to like accept the subscription, so it's just a matter of we've added the email addresses people have provided to us. And it's just a matter of them, you know, clicking yes, confirm subscription, and then they'll receive the information we push out to the Comp Plan group uh as we send emails. Um the newsletter, we were able to get that out, some of you, hopefully all of you have seen it. Um some of you might have received in the mail, some of you might have seen it um on counters at different city halls and different locations. Um we sent, we mailed the newsletter out to anybody who was at any of the community meetings. And that includes the Leonerville one in January. Anybody who gave us, who signed in, there's a lot of people who didn't necessarily sign in, but anybody who signed in, we have that information. We mailed that, the newsletter to them. We also sent um stacks to each of the small city city halls. Uh we brought um copies to Manhattan City Hall in the library. Um we have uh copies in each of our public buildings, we'll see them down around the planning office building, down at the uh reception desk. Uh we have them in at the museum, the health department, um public works. So we originally wanted to mail them to every address that we sent a township notification postcard to, all five thousand sixty six. Well, that was not inexpensive. And we would like to um make the newsletter a regular occurrence, so we just could not justify spending, literally spending several thousand dollars on one mailing when we wanna do this multiple times. So we kind of found the hopefully a way that'll that'll still work for people um and hopefully people will will get the calls that people have received or they're asking questions and stuff, so.
Yeah, we have a whole copy of that that could be shared on social media site.
Yes, and it is out there. Yep, thank you. Let's see, so our Comp Plan Committee, um our subcommittees have been meeting over the last several months and we reconvene the full group at the beginning of February just to get together, so each of the group leads could share um what their group's been talking about, if they have any draft language, kind of, you know, any directions or any initial thoughts they were having. Um generated a lot of good discussion um amongst the overall, through a lot of good input from various people. Um and what we're discovering and what was kind of evident about during that conversations, people are realizing there's a lot of overlap between sections. And your economic development is gonna impact a lot of a lot of different pieces. Your health and your um housing and your um parks and rec, they're all very intertwined. And so a lot of the um groups, even though they have different categories, if you will, they've had a lot of similar conversations or things that will really kind of tie together well in plan, so. So it was a um helpful meeting, at least in my opinion, so. So branding, um that is our plan logo, title and tagline. Um so what we've done is we've created a simple survey um that is out on our website for folks to vote on um options for a logo, options for a title and options for a tagline. Where those, all of that came from is the keywords and the key themes collected from the the public input we've gotten. So you'll see those on there and those are again directly from um that public survey input, the community meetings, that's what all of those options were left for folks to um choose from. Um the Board of County Commissioners will take that information from that survey and uh make the final determination, but it was just really important we get um some identity to this um plan that's separate from. Right now, of course, we're using our standard Riley County logo, which, you know, is fine, but we just think it's important that it have its own logo, its own identity, its own title and taglines, so people really know what this plan is about and what we're trying to do with it, so. So that's out there now. Um, let's see, just kind of attentive timeline, we're still, of course, um subcommittees are still meeting and the um logo and title options are out there, still targeting draft language next month, it might not happen, but we're still, you know, going towards it as it is. Um of course, public meetings with you folks and the Board of County Commissioners are ongoing. And tentative to adopt the plan by the end of the year, we might have to wind up pushing that out now, but that's kind of still what we're what we're targeting uh for right now. Any questions or? Thank you.
Thank you. Since you have something else, Bob? Or I'm gonna wrap it up.
Well, this is uh.
Oh, you're getting lights, okay. Does anybody else have uh any other business items? Doesn't appear that we have any. So at this time, I would uh take a motion for adjournment.
They'll move.
Second.
We moved and seconded that we adjourned Riley County Planning Board meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Motion carried, five of.